Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Our meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast, Channel 8, or Verizon, Channel 37, also on YouTube. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public School website under School Committee, and all times are approximate. I'm going to start by taking role, Mr. Conroy?
Here.
Mr. Catalano?
Here.
Ms. Gibbons?
Here.
Ms. Roach?
Here.
And our teacher, Ms. Copies. And our student reps are not here today, and our superintendent, Mr. Mulaney.
Yep.
Judy, did anyone sign in for open session?
No.
No one has signed in for open session. We'll move to our action items in consideration to approve the school committee meeting minutes from September 28th.
I'm chair.
Mr. Catalano?
I make a motion to approve the Millis School Committee meeting minutes from September 28th, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to our teacher rep. Ms. Copies, do you want to come up to the microphone up front here?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
So, this week we have to report that the Clyde Brown is going to have Wacky Wednesday tomorrow, on Wednesday. Apparently, they're going to shake up their apparel. I'm sure there'll be some fun pictures to see later on about that. And they have Picture Day on Thursday, the 7th, which is kind of fun. The middle school had their open house last week on Thursday. It was attended by quite a few people, according to Mr. Glynn. And this Thursday, they have Dr. The Machine, Jesse Green, coming to do a motivational assembly while he carves wood.
The guy from Megway?
Yes.
He's awesome.
So, he is awesome, and that program is being funded by the Millis Cultural Council. So, that'll be kind of exciting, I think. I'm curious myself, to be honest with you. The high school won an award from the GreatSchools.org, the Fourth Annual College Success Award. This award recognizes public high schools that excel at preparing students for, to enroll and succeed at college level. Okay? Millis was also recognized as an inaugural gold school, which only 1,770 other schools in the nation were recognized in this way. And this was for a multi-year track record of college success amongst their students. So, that's kind of a nice thing. We are in the Throes of Spirit Week at the high school, which will culminate with the homecoming game on Friday night. And as we back into it, the homecoming dance is taking place under the stars on the tennis court Thursday evening. There's much buzz about it in the hallways, and a lot of talk of dress procurement. The homecoming court was announced today, so that was exciting at the end of the day. The chorus will be singing at the Providence Bruins game on October 16th. That'll be following those of them who are participating in the morning administration of the pre-CTs, pre-CTs, yeah, and the PSATs, which is kind of exciting. Turpsikiri has finally started rehearsing for Nutcracker. In fact, that's where I was about two seconds ago. We are still accepting for younger student roles. We're looking for a few poodles and reindeers out there. If any of you want to step in, let me know. We can do guest appearances. It could be fun.
I can't remember the dance.
It's not hard. We can all do it. Drama Club is actively rehearsing for their play, and middle school drama is also active. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
You too.
All right. So, let's move into our time and learning with our district improvement plan.
Okay. Thank you. It was just nice hearing Ms. Copies talk about all those things that are getting us back to normal, things we didn't have last year. Last year at this time, a year ago today, there were no kids in the building. So, it's been a positive year already. The district improvement plan establishes the broad goals that we want to focus on during this school year. It's kind of a big-picture view, and in upcoming meetings, the school improvement plans will have a little more detail on this. They'll be aligned with the district plan. Okay. The goals align with our vision, our mission. Our vision at the Millis Public Schools, Millis Public Schools are respected for high academic standards, commitment to social responsibility, and dedicated to educating and inspiring every student to achieve personal excellence. Our mission here at the schools, Millis Public Schools community is firmly committed to developing students as independent lifelong learners and leaders who will contribute to a changing and complex society. One of the things we feel we can do exceptionally well in our small school, big family environment is personalizing learning. So, we have a district overarching personalized learning goal. In Millis, we honor each student as an individual learner, recognizing the students have their own learning styles, interests, passions, challenges to learning, strengths, identities, and skills. We engage, support, and challenge all students through varied and culturally responsive instructional approaches that help students take ownership of their learning. Students are afforded voice, choice, and flexibility in how they learn, and allowed to demonstrate their understanding in various ways to improve student well-being and ensure that they are future-ready. So, those are the overarching principles we're looking at as we establish our goals. For 2122, we have four main goals. And again, in contrast to last year, last year was a lot about survival, just getting through the year. This year, we believe we'll be able to tackle these very important goals and move the district forward. First goal is provide rigorous, challenging learning experiences that promote academic growth for all students. Second goal is to collaborate with the leadership team to develop clear and rigorous expectations for teaching and learning. Third goal, support student physical and mental health and wellness. And finally, examine district and school programs, protocols, and practices to ensure equity and inclusion. So, if we look at the first goal, promoting rigorous academic growth, first of all, coming off last year and since May of 2020, obviously, there has been some unfinished learning among students and standards that we haven't necessarily been able to cover at grade level. However, our default is to accelerate rather than remediate. And what does that mean? Remediate means just going back and teaching what was missed. What research shows is that accelerating learning has better outcomes. And what that means is you teach at grade, you teach grade-level standards and skills and address the areas where students may not have the foundational skills at that time. So, you use the, you do, you know, tiered support. You might do a mini lesson on a foundational skill to get the students up to speed on that grade-level material. And a number of, we have a number of other things we're doing in the schools to get kids that support so that they can be working at grade level. Clyde Brown, a main focus you'll be hearing about in a few weeks with the Clyde Brown School Improvement, is they're continuing their work with the Hill Group on the Science of Reading. It's a part of the initiative work that has been done for the last couple of years at Clyde Brown, and we kind of had to slow it down a little last year, but we're back up and running with the Science of Learning, excuse me, Science of Reading. And there'll be, there's a professional development day on Friday, and the Clyde Brown staff will be engaged in the Science of Reading training with the Hill Group, and eventually implementing those best practices and resources. Again, to support this idea of acceleration rather than remediation, all schools will be providing tiered supports and interventions to students to give them what they need. And at the middle and high school, the schedules will address some of these opportunities for tiered supports and interventions. In the WIN block at the middle school, which they piloted last year, WIN stands for "what I need," and it's dedicated time where teachers can work with small groups and individual students, providing them tiered supports and interventions for the challenging academic material they'll be working with. Flex block is new at the high school. It's also a bit of a progression from the schedule change we had last year as a result of COVID. And the flex block will also allow time for students to get tiered supports and interventions. And both WIN and flex will allow for students to pursue deeper learning in areas of interest to them. So, we're very excited about those changes at the middle and high school. And again, at the school improvement plans, the middle and high school, school improvement plans are tentatively scheduled for November 2nd. They'll have more information on that. High school will continue its work with NIASK and the Vision of a Graduate. That work was started a couple of years ago. Last year, again, we had to kind of take a pause on it, but we will be continuing to do that. And the ultimate goal of Vision of a Graduate is to develop a profile of the skills, knowledge, and habits of a high school. What would like a high school graduate from Millis High School to have? The skills, habits, dispositions, and knowledge. And we're also working on selecting a curriculum for English language learners. That group of students, that population of students has been growing each year. In 2020, I believe there were 15 English language learners in the district. 21 last year, we had 25. And right now, as of this morning, I believe we have 27. So, it's a growing population, and we're going to be doing a lot of work to make sure those students are provided with what they need. Second goal, collaborate with the leadership team to develop clear and rigorous expectations for teaching and learning. We are all aware that we have two schools with brand-new principals, and one school with a principal who has been in the position since July of 2020. So, we thought this was a very important time for us to look as an administrative team at what makes good teaching and learning. We started with the, our retreat in July, where we kind of did a Bill Belichick and Tom Brady thing, where we went to the tape, and we did a lot of observing of teaching on tape, not Millis teachers, but different resources out there, and are starting to work towards calibrating what we, what we expect when we go into a classroom. For this year, we're going to be using the focus indicators of the educator evaluation system provided by the DESE. And just to give you a sense of these indicators that DESE has chosen as important for teaching and learning, there are six different indicators, one in curriculum planning, learning, environment, cultural proficiency, family collaboration, reflection, and professional collaboration. And we'll use this document, and, you know, just an example for curriculum and planning. You know, we're going to be looking for, does the teacher knows the subject matter well, has a good grasp of child development and how students learn, and designs effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. So, we'll be working as a group to define what that looks like in our classrooms at the various levels. We're also, as I mentioned, we have the new principals, and we're working as a group. We're one of about a dozen schools in the Commonwealth, working with the Department of Education in a principal induction and mentoring professional learning network, which will enable us and our principals to engage with principals from other districts, as well as mentors, as they get through their year, you know, their first years in the position. So, we're really looking forward for that assistance from the DESE. And as an administrative team, we're also going to be doing classroom walkthroughs in pairs. They're non-evaluative on, of the teacher, but it'll give us fodder for discussion and, you know, understanding, coming to understanding on good, what good teaching looks like in our schools. Next goal is to support student physical and mental health and wellness. Again, we're going to be trying to do everything we can for our nurses. They've been out straight since, you know, this time last year, and we want to continue to try and get them what they need. Just at the district level, we have, we have sent out advertisements for substitute nurses. We have a few people who are interested, so that will be very helpful to the nurses as they do the many functions that are so necessary right now. As you all know, we're participating in test and stay, which allows kids who are identified as close contacts in school to stay in school as long as they are asymptomatic and test-negative. So, that's, we've already saved a number of school days for kids who are able to test and stay. We always want to promote positive classroom and school cultures. As when Mr. Wigan and I talk a little bit about some of our grant plans for the year, a number of those grants will be used to, grant funds will be used to support SEL programs. And in the high school, as you know, the high school is partnering with the JED Foundation for the next two years to look at our mental health and wellness practices and procedures to address suicide prevention, substance misuse prevention, and mental health and wellness. So, we think these are very necessary things that we need to do coming off the COVID year. And so, again, a very important focus area. Before I get to the next goal, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the demographics in our schools. In 2010, 2011, the race/ethnicity statistics for Millis were, we had 93.7% of our students were white. Fast forward 10 years to last year, we're at 83.7% of our students being white, classified as white. The town is changing demographically. The schools are changing demographically, and our society is changing demographically. And we want to make sure that we're teaching all students. And so, this leads us to our next goal, examine district and school programs, protocols, and practices to ensure equity and inclusion. One of the focus indicators for the DESE 2021, 2022 focus areas that we're working with our teachers is incorporating equity and inclusion into teaching goals, classroom routines, and curriculum materials. We want our curriculum materials to be reflective of the diversity of the kids in the seats in the class, and the diversity of our society. So, we want to, we want to examine all those things to make sure that all our students feel welcome and respected in our schools and in our classrooms. We're going to look at district and school data and address any patterns or areas of concern. You know, we look at things like the STEM classes, what's, you know, who, what types of students are populating our STEM classes, our advanced STEM classes, and our groups. Do we find that some groups aren't able to or don't take those classes? A few years ago, we noticed that there was an issue with some of our female students taking higher-level STEM classes. And so, you know, those are the types of things we look at and we, and we want to address. The challenging thing in Millis is we're such a small district that one student can represent more than 1% of a student. So, you kind of have to look at patterns over time, but certainly examining data with an eye to those areas and disaggregating students by different groups and classifications can help us make sure that when we say we teach all learners, we're teaching all learners. And we will continue professional learning on equity and inclusion. Last year, we started with the MACH Center, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center out of Bridgewater State University, and we did some training with diversity and bias back in January and April of last year. Over the summer, we had a number of teachers who took a class on UDL, Universal Design for Learning and Equity, and we have a number of other teachers who have expressed an interest in a course like that. And we'll also be continuing professional learning on equity inclusion this year at our January full-day professional development day and our April professional development, half a day. So, it's something we want, we want to make sure we're keeping our eye on, as I said, you know, with the changing demographics. And that is, those are the broad goals for the, for the school year. I included the, in the packet, the district improvement plan that has a little more details on the action steps and timelines and things like that. At this point, I didn't, any questions or anything?
Almost have.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now, we're going to move into our chair report, and one of the thing, or a thing on there is the metrics for unmasking. And the conversation was?
Nope. We met today.
Today.
I have an update.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, there's two issues. The first issue is, and per our request, the superintendent reached out to DESI because of the middle school includes grade six, which are not eligible for vaccination, and we were asking whether we could separate the two schools, middle school versus high school. And right now, the preliminary kind of feedback is they, they're looking, they would probably treat the whole building as one school. We, they would not separate. They did tell us that we could submit an attestation and then go from there. I think we should, obviously, when we get to that point, we should proceed in that, and let's see what happens. But that's not necessarily the best of news, but it's not a final thing by any means. So, a quick update, they're still collecting some data. The numbers are approximate. So, overall, when you look at the middle school, high school staff, 88% of our staff are vaccinated. That's everyone. That's teachers, staff, cafeteria, transportation, administration, everything in between, 88%. Grade seven, 70%. Grade eight, 70%. Grade nine, 68%. Grade 10, 78%. Grade 11, 88%. Grade 12, 74%. So, when you look at both buildings combined, six through 12, with staff, we're at 67%. So, we're not at 80% yet. If you look at grades seven through 12, with staff, we're at 76%. If DESI is not going to separate out the middle school versus high school, I highly doubt that they would allow us to separate out sixth grade, but it's still good to track the numbers. And then, if you just look at the high school, we're at 79%. So, we very easily could get to 80% in the high school with four or five people getting their shots. And the way the nurses left it on the call, they were still calculating some data. So, these numbers are fairly clean, but there's definitely some people up in the air right now. The superintendent sent a very, very good letter home last week, kind of explaining the lay of the land and where we're at. We can only implore parents and people to get vaccinated because that's the only way we're going to be able to unmask. So, you know, it can't hurt to remind, but, so that's where we're at right now. So, we're getting closer. At a minimum, it was October 15th was the deadline. So, it's not even, even if we were at 80% today, we'd still have another, what is it, the fifth? We'd still have another 10 days. So, we'll continue to update the numbers, and we'll report back. The Health and Safety meets every Tuesday. So, that's where we're at. Any questions about the metrics?
I have, Madam Chair. So, if DESI doesn't allow us to separate middle school, high school, and we have to treat it as one building, do we know what number the rest of the population needs to get at to compensate for the sixth grade that can't?
It's like 93 to 95%.
So, we, so the rest, so seven through 10?
Seven through 12.
Oh, seven through 12, sorry. It would have to be 93 to 95%.
We, we did the numbers. It's really, really high. I, I can't imagine we would get there. I, I just think that that would be really difficult.
I think it's tough, again, because, and also the thing, so, I think I sent it a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't send it out this week, but I've been looking at how the state, each week, every Thursday night, they post the number of people by age in town who have gotten shots. And so, they give, how many have the first shot, how many have the second shot. I've been trending each week, the last two weeks, so last Thursday report, the last two weeks, we've only had six people in, in the two age groups of nine to, or 12 to 15, and then 16 to 19. And only three in that 12 to 15 age group in each of the last two to three weeks have gotten shots each week. So, the numbers, there was a peak, what, after the state came out and said it was, this was going to be a requirement, there was a peak of roughly 10 to 12 people a week in that, in that age group of 12 to 15, which is really grade seven through 10 is in that one group. But then, after that, the last few weeks, it's been low single digits, which means that's four weeks before they, you know, so we need an influx of people, you know.
But to Bob's point, we're a small district, so one or two kids could make a, so, yeah.
Right. Yes.
So, I just don't want people to think it's so unobtainable that they don't go out and get it. So, you know, a handful or a half dozen more kids could push us over the edge.
I was making the point that to incorporate the sixth grade, the numbers would have to be.
93%, which is really high.
Which is really high.
Not impossible, but.
Not impossible, but really high. And I don't want to make, I don't want to be negative about it, but I also don't want to set false expectations, like 93, 94% is really high.
But we can put in an exemption or a.
Yeah. They said we can submit, and right now, their inclination is the verb that I got.
Even though they're separate, in separate wings, is it because of shared space?
The way it's written is it's the building, the physical building.
Yeah.
I still think we should absolutely submit and fight.
When we get to 30%.
When we get to 80%, we got, or we get there.
Yep. Yep. We're getting there.
The other thing, I think, again, as an encouragement, but also as a question, and I think people need to think about too, is as we get to Thanksgiving, winter sports are going to start. And if, even if we are at that point, anyone who is not vaccinated is still going to have to wear a mask. And that, as of right now, is going to include all athletic activities indoors. So, if. The other thing, I think, again, as an encouragement, but also as a question, and I think people need to think about too, is as we get to Thanksgiving, winter sports are going to start. And if, even if we are at that point, anyone who is not vaccinated is still going to have to wear a mask. And that, as of right now, is going to include all athletic activities indoors. So if people are not vaccinated, and we could be in a situation where there are, some players are, some players are masked and some players are not masked. If that's an incentive for anybody, you know, I think, I think people need to be aware of that. I also, I know I've brought this up a couple of times, I am hopeful and I hope, you know, Mr. Grant and principals and that, and superintendents in, at least in the Tri-Valley League, can come up with some type of common practice that the league is going to adopt either... I just think it puts, it's going to put people in a really awkward and difficult position if we have different buildings allowing different situations. Quite frankly, because of the building that we're in, if DESI holds to this, we are also in a position where we may be the only building in the Tri-Valley, the only high school that has to require masks in the building, which I just think is difficult. I think that, again, ideally, I would like the Tri-Valley League to come up with a standard approach as to how this is going to go. But we are, but if they're not, then I think between the Health and Safety Committee and us, we're going to have to understand how we're going to deal with this because obviously what happens is going to happen in our building is going to be by the building, but are we going to be in a position where for away games, if the Tri-Valley League says it's up to whatever the rule is at the school, are we going to allow, when our teams are away, are we going to allow them to go by those rules? Which I don't necessarily have a preference, I think we just have to think about it because I, I just, I think about the impact of the kids who are going to be required to wear a mask when others aren't. Personally, I just think that's a, I just think it's a bad scenario. I know that that's, you know, potentially where it is, and I'm just, I'm not saying just for Milis, I just think across the board, if you are, you, you know, singling out athletes, singling out, you know, people masked, unmasked, and you're going to enforce it, who's going to enforce it, how is this all going to work, is something we can't think about Thanksgiving weekend. Like this has to be laid out. And again, if it's any incentive at all, the clock is ticking on five weeks before somebody can be fully vaccinated. So they would need that first shot in the next two weeks in order to be fully vaccinated by then winter sports start.
Madam Chair, could we put that on the next school committee meeting agenda for us to maybe get an update from Mr. Grant on what, if any discussions have happened through the Tri-Valley? Just to Mr. Conroy's point, we're already in October, captain's practice is going to start, open gym's going to start, there are going to be activities that are going to start ahead of the actual season, so the sooner we can get that.
I agree.
I did have a chance to speak to Mr. Grant about it, just really briefly, but at this time, there's been discussions among the ADs, but no, no definitive protocol has been put forth or suggested.
Do they have a deadline?
I think they're looking more at the district level, the district...
What do you mean?
Like the district, like having it come down from the district level to the schools, not coming up through the athletic directors. What do you mean?
So they're waiting for MIA to tell...
No, I think it's more they're looking at a body like this.
Each district would make their own policies.
And...
And then visitors would have to abide by whatever that district's policy is.
That's, those are the discussions they're having.
Sure, yeah.
You know, it's, it's all, it's all new to them as well. And we get a little sample of, of what happens when in some schools, there's one rule and some, there's another one with, you know, at the end of the spring season last year with baseball and softball.
So, Bob, enough, to be perfectly honest, I don't think this is on you as a superintendent. I really, I think it's unfortunate if the athletic directors can't come together and start figuring this out as a league.
Well, and I don't want to, just a brief conversation, I don't want to characterize.
But league, like, as a league, and it's not, by no means is this just even the Tri-Valley League. I highly doubt that many conferences across the state are really, because everybody's just kind of probably hoping and wishing that the MIA is going to come out with something which they're not going to, because they pass the buck every time. DESI is not going to give us anything. So, you know, is it, the biggest kind of thing that's going to drive this is, to what extent do we think different, again, we can only go to the Tri-Valley League, it's the easiest way to do it, but how many schools in the league think that they are going to be in a position of, to go unmasked? Or to make it optional? Because again, part of the problem too is, even if we hit 80%, every school committee is going to have to choose whether or not they want to do that. So some schools may opt not do it even if they're at 80%, but how many are close? Because again, if we're, if everybody's in masks everywhere because DESI hasn't lifted it or nobody's at 80%, it becomes an easier conversation. It becomes really difficult if Medway and Medfield are optional and we're not because we can't, we're not at 80%.
So, does it help Mr. Grant if we ask targeted questions and ask him to go back to the other athletic directors? Because if the decisions are going to be made at our level, we need information and data. Like what are the, what teams are we playing this year? So what are the, the two basketball teams, who are they playing? I suspect schedules have already been established. And then to do an informal poll of where they sit at next Monday or Tuesday, what percentages are they at? What is, what do they, what is, have they determined an unmasking rate? I get that they want to put it on us, but we need information in order to make that decision.
Are we overthinking it a little? Isn't it just up to, you know, whatever the district's rules are, you have to, because why would we have separate rules for sports? Isn't it more of, you know, if Milis, if we have, say we have a everyone in mask rule, I'm just making it, making it up, and they're moving and they're playing Medway and Medway, isn't it our rule, like our kids' rule? Or is it, is the question, I guess the more question is, then do we adopt the rules of the school that we're going to?
That's, I think that's what it is. That's the question.
Because last spring...
Do each school abide by their own rules or are we adopting the rules of the school?
Right.
So it's really the one or two, it's one or the other.
Right. And last spring, it was the rules of the facility is what was supposed to dictate.
Right.
So, so that's how it was. So that's, you know, if that's ultimately what it was, which is, you know, that's fine. I think, I do think that then there's a, I think, and potentially every district or at least us, I would pose the question of, if we aren't, if we aren't at 80% and our teams are playing at a, at a mask optional facility, should we continue to require masks because that is the rule of the school and the district?
But they're, but they're mask optional only because they've hit 80%. We're not at that threshold, so wouldn't that be, like, that wouldn't apply to us?
I, so, I think, I think that's a question we would have to answer.
Yeah. I mean, it would almost be easier if all of the athletic directors just said, our teams follow the rules of the district that they're in. I mean, that's the easy answer, right?
But, so, and I, I think your question is a rhetorical, are we overthinking? We always overthink, which is fine. It's fine. We make sport of it. But if Medway comes to play, and I believe Medway is, on the 15th will be unmasked, or at least the word on the street?
Could be. Right, we have some names that...
Okay, so Medway or Medfield is unmasked. They come here for December, whatever game. Are we allowing them not, they're not going to be unmasked in our building?
Correct.
Because our building is the higher threshold of masks, assuming we're still masked, for the sake of this conversation.
But then when our, so that night...
When we go to Medway.
That night, the boys are here, the girls would be there.
But to Ms. Roach's point, we're not at 80%, so we're not taking our mask off because we're still concerned about spread.
Our kids are. And I know it's hard because we're talking, because this is where DESI, because it's off of the building, it should almost be like for sports, it's off of our population. Because if the Medway population is 80% vaccinated, we're assuming their team is 80% vaccinated, so they should be allowed to be unmasked, whether they're in Milis or Dover or wherever. Because we're assuming the population as a whole overall is vaccinated. If we're not there, then it shouldn't matter, you know, where we go, we should be masked.
So...
Even if they, if they allow, we're still not, if we're still not at 80%, we shouldn't, our kids shouldn't be allowed, because collectively, we're not at that threshold.
Right. But like, just the numbers I did, we're at 79% for nine through 12.
Yeah.
So we're close. Let's just assume...
I'm just saying that in...
No, 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 I understand. But in three weeks, we're going to be over 80%, right? Let's just assume. I think I, I like where you're going is that even though this building, which say DESI says no, worst case scenario, you treat it as one building, we're not unmasked, if our high school is plus 80%, why wouldn't we allow them?
Right.
To be unmasked in a district that is unmasked? I don't know, it's...
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think it just gets confusing just because the sixth graders are in here because we're, it's considered one building, but if you think of it as a population, that our high school populate, because it's when we're going to sport, in our high school population, we hit the 80 threshold.
I mean, that's the argument we're going to make, is that we're going to separate the two buildings until we get to that 94%. We're going to separate the two buildings and try to unmask at least one if we get over 80.
But even if we can't do that, I think we still might be able to make the argument for sports.
I think...
Hopefully, that they can be, if we hit that threshold for sports, it's because our, our high school athlete population is at the 80%.
I think if we did that, we would actually base it on individuals and not percentages. If we were going to do, it would be based on the people on the team, the roster.
I mean, that's one way to do it too. So, I mean, I think there's, I just...
I think that's a high level of management that we're going to have to get into, like, so who's going to say...
And then you're talking about spectators.
Yeah. I feel like it needs to be more, more, more of a blanket.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking more right now about what, when we're going somewhere else, less here.
I also think that if, you know, even, these buildings, if a building's at 80%, the vaccinated students can unmask, but if they have players who are unvaccinated, they're still going to be wearing masks, and so I would assume...
That's right, okay, that, it takes, they made the decision for us, you're right, you're right.
And we did, you know, last year, like I said, we did have a sample of that when the outdoor unmasking mandate was lifted in the state. Some schools lifted it right away, others, you know, we had to wait a few days to go through the process. So there were a few days where, you know, if we were playing Norton, the away team was unmasked, the teams that came here were masked. And it is, it's confusing and it's...
And who's going to manage, so, are the coaches?
Right, right. And it was, you know, it was a mess.
And again, this goes to the ADs, the ADs and the coaches in the Tri-Valley League, who's going to, who's going to provide the roster of vaccinated and unvaccinated so that it's checked at every game?
Right, right. And it'll have to be. Yep.
And I don't want to throw this monkey wrench in, but what about spectators?
First game is December 4th.
Yeah, and...
And I, you know...
I will happily go on record, I think that all spectators should be masked. We're not going to be asking people for vaccination cards or proof of vaccination or leaving it up to the honor system.
I think our priority should be the kids on the court, right? If, but, and then if we're having spectators, because there's people outside that live outside of Milis, we don't, you know, people from out of town. I have no problem with masks.
All ages spectators, because we don't have any capacity, restraints?
All age spectators mask up.
I don't have a problem with that.
The gym can be, the gym very well can be full when it couldn't be last year.
Yeah.
Like we can have...
We were sitting in pods.
I know.
To a, to a game. It was nice to be in there though.
Yeah. Especially if the kids on the floor are going to be unmasked.
So in those discussions, I'm sure the ADs have been having that about the spectators and things. And again, my conversation with Mr. Grant was, was brief. We didn't get...
He can watch us on YouTube, he'll understand the concerns that we have.
And again, it becomes, it also becomes a communication thing.
Yes.
Again, like, this information, these decisions shouldn't be coming out three days before the first game. How, obviously, everything changes, DESI can come in and do whatever they're going to, whatever. But to, even though I may be overthinking it, we kind of need to get in front of this.
So if we add it to next week's agenda, can we also set a date that we need to have a policy by, just so that we're like sort of self-managing to a specific date? So if we know that the, like, if the season's supposed to start on whatever date. So first game is the 4th of December, is that the first game?
First basketball game.
Okay. So...
That means before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Do they start, will it start? I forget.
They start the Monday after Thanksgiving.
The preseason, and even open gyms, like the preseason stuff, that's Milis only, that would still just be dictated by the building rules.
Right.
So if we haven't lifted anything, they're all in masks for open gym.
Yeah, what about by our November 16th meeting? Because that's after the November 1st mandate. And we'll know more about what other schools are going to be, whether they're lifting their mandates or not, and that will give us at least two weeks of knowing what schools have lifted it or not by then.
That seems right. We're having conversations ahead of time, but then that's our drop dead for the policy. That's, I think that's the right schedule.
Then two weeks later is the 30th or whatever, after Thanksgiving week.
So right before tip-off.
Two-week buffer after and two-week buffer before.
That makes sense.
That's good.
And then ultimately, just, just like the, just like Bob said, if you are unvaccinated, regardless of what the rules are, you are...
That's right.
You are still going to be in a mask.
That's not our rule. That's a state mandate.
Right. So if it's worth getting the vaccines, you potentially don't have to wear a mask while you play basketball or any of the other winter sports this year, that's your incentive, whatever it takes.
Let's do this, and then we'll deal with the rampant dogs on this facility. That's...
Anything else to report on our metrics for unmasking from the Health and Safety Committee?
Can have fun. No, that's it.
I don't think so.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, uh, sorry, the...
Assisted by Mr. Wiggins.
Who are you? Come on down.
I included in the packet the stakeholder survey we sent out, and this, this information was considered when we were looking at the different expenditures we wanted to use the funds for.
So, this is SER 3. You probably heard about it more in the media referred to as the American Rescue Act. Grant, Milis received, or Milis Public Schools, received in this particular portion of the grant, and I'll go into what that means in a second, $284,000 and change. and change. 20% of that, we have to use to help disadvantaged youth or special populations, and I'll get into that when I go through some of the items that we have put forward in this grant. And we did have to do this a little differently. Normally, we would come to you with a list, get your approval. We had some timing issues with getting a survey out and getting feedback and doing some things, so we actually had to submit the grant prior to coming to you. So telling you what's in the grant as we applied for it and have been approved for it, doesn't mean we can't amend it. In fact, it doesn't mean we won't amend it down the road, and I'll explain one of those places. Currently, there is a little over $38,000 to increase, and I want to stress something here, when I talk about positions, these are all one-year positions or one-year increases. There's nothing that is considered multi-year. So there's a little over $38,000 to increase current ELL staffing and to add some part-time ELL staffing, again, for one year, to help address some of the learning gap issues for ELL students. There is $72,000 and change to hire additional staff to address the gap specifically in math at the elementary level. There is a little over $51,000 to pay for two part-time custodians. We actually started them midway through last year, we're continuing this year under the grant, and they're again going to continue with the additional cleaning and disinfecting protocols that we put in place. There is almost $23,000 to pay for a .5 FTE tech support person. Again, during this process, we've gone to a one-to-one student device protocol. That requires a lot more support than, quite honestly, we're, we have the people for. Last year, we were lucky, we had a couple of student interns. These funds would support hopefully a similar model, where we'd be able to get a couple of student interns for that money to provide that support. There is right now $10,000 for additional nursing support to assist our three nurses. I suspect that's a place that will be amended up. In some of these other numbers I've just quoted you, it's going to take some time to hire some people and get them on board, so that's going to free up some of those dollars naturally. And consequently, I believe that some of those dollars that get freed up will be moved into the nursing line. That's why I said there'd be some amendments, and that's why I think it'll happen. There is right now a little under $10,000 to pay for Massachusetts teacher retirement for the staff that we would hire or extend that qualify for Massachusetts teacher retirement. There is $10,000 to purchase clear masks for students and staff.
Terry, excuse me.
Yes.
If we are hiring these people.
Yes.
As one-year grant-funded people.
Correct.
Why are we paying into Massachusetts retirement?
Because we have to if they're professional staff.
Okay, so that's a mandate.
That's a mandate. If they work more, let's remember what the minimum is. There's a couple of staff positions here, we won't be paying MTRS because they don't work enough hours.
Okay, that's fine, okay, it's a mandate.
I want to say that if they work more than two days a week.
Okay, all right.
Then we have to pay into MTRS. There's $7,000 for English language learner supplies. Earlier in the superintendent's report, he mentioned reading at the elementary school. There's $15,000 in this grant to support the purchase of K through 5 reading materials that relate to implementation of the programs that the Hill Group wants to have at the elementary school and is working with our teachers to implement. There's $2,500 for ELL professional development. There's $8,100 for, and actually, this is one of the most intriguing things, I can't wait to see this thing, but it's a touchless vision screener. And for obvious reasons, one, it helps expedite the screening, but it also helps do the vision screening in a, a safe way, because the nurses no longer have to, obviously, interact contact, you know, the student. And screenings have come back into play this year, so this is something we have to do.
So that's 284, what you just read?
That's what I just.
Out of how much?
That, that's, that's one grant, okay?
That's exactly what the grant is.
That's exactly what this grant is.
284, and you did up to 284.
Right.
Okay.
So, there are two sister grants, okay? One is a special ed grant, so think of that as the sister to the IDEA grant, okay? But again, it's part of the S R 3, okay? The Director of Student Services has done an application for that, and Bob, you probably know more about than I do, but I do know that I think that has a social-emotional learning component, as I recall.
Social-emotional component, particularly targeting the middle school.
Right.
Some of the issues.
Because that's where we're seeing some, some issues and.
Yeah, and definitely pandemic-related.
And the total amount of that grant, I don't know the total, I don't know the specific components of total amount, but I do know the total amount of the grant is, I believe, 62 to 45 of that grant. So, there's some, some real money there. And then again, a sister amount, or a sister grant to the early childhood grant, okay? If you remember, that's the grant that pays for part of a preschool paraprofessional, that's a little over $5,000. Has to be used at the preschool level. Neely and I haven't really talked about that, because that's kind of the small player in all of this. My guess, we're going to probably use that for some form of supplies, possibly equipment. There's enough there that, I don't know that the preschoolers have ever really been using iPads or anything like that, so I don't know whether or not they would use the grant for this, but again, that would be up to Neely to decide. But it's a relatively small grant in the scheme of things. And those would be the three portions, if you will, of, of the American Rescue Grant that Millis is getting. A little bit less than we originally thought in the primary grant, but we did get the two sister grants. Are there any, any, any questions regarding that? And I will get you out something in writing. What I'd like to do, if you don't mind me waiting, is I'll wait till we have the filing for the two special ed grants, and I'll give you something on all three.
Sure. So can I, is this open for a question?
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
So, there were a lot of really important social-emotional supports.
Mm-hmm.
From curriculum to staff. Was there any discussion around helping fund, or partially funding, even though it's grant-funded, the townwide social worker, which I think is?
Yes, and I can respond to that. I dissuaded that. I will freely admit it, I will take responsibility for that. The reason I will take responsibility for that is because that was part of our request for marijuana revenue. And we were told back in the spring that we would probably get most, if not all of our requests, at that time, it was 122,000. When I updated the numbers, the numbers came for essentially the same request, for the most part, to 139,000. I think everybody read the headline in the paper.
Million dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike has not formally met with Bob and I, so I can't guarantee this, but I would be disappointed if our request was not filled, because there are requirements under the law that a portion of that revenue has to be used for public education. And, you know, we're basically asking for 13% of what they've taken in. So I don't see.
Okay.
That as being a problem, particularly when the social worker piece wasn't even a full school request, that was something we proposed as a shared position.
But it was a good bridge.
Oh, absolutely.
Because what's happening at home.
Absolutely.
Is happening on the streets, for lack of a better term, and then happening in the school, it crosses all, so I think it makes sense to do a joint.
I, I agree, we agree with you, but I, I will also take the responsibility.
No, you're not taking responsibility, that makes perfect sense for what you said.
Yeah. Well, I like to be responsible for something when it happens good, too, so.
Don't push it.
I've had my positive quota today, I gave Bob two compliments.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Any other questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Terry.
I don't think we have anything else here in.
Just executive session.
It's going to be a quick one.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations for union and non-union personnel not to return to open session.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further? So roll call vote, okay, Ms. Roach?
Aye.
Mr. Conroy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Mr. Catalina?
Aye.
Ms. Gibbons?
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session, and we'll be back November, or October 19th.